Members of council, item number two, the office of Jennifer French, MPP, Oshawa, Jack Wadonald, constituent assistant requesting Jennifer French, MPP, address council about community concerns, our proposed private members legislation that she will bring forward. Members of council, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to hear, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Kerr on the motion to hear. All those in favor? Opposed? None? That carries. MPP French, if you'd like to come forward, please. When you're ready, push the green button, and you have five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council, and I am very pleased to join you this evening on your turf. I understand that through the years provincial and federal members of parliament have on occasion come to address this council, and I have not yet had the opportunity to do so. So I wanted to take that opportunity to update you before the legislature resumes and I head back to Queen's Park. I would first like to say I appreciate very much the work that this council does. Our office is also a busy one, and I know that we overlap on many issues that we handle. Our office has appreciated working with many of you on challenges facing our shared constituents, especially when it comes to affordable housing, community safety, transportation issues, and struggles with the cost of living. I would like to highlight a few themes our office has identified and share with you some of the issues that we have been working on, especially when it comes to where I would like to see strong bridges between our municipality and our province. Over the past three and a half years, we have consistently been working with families when it comes to long-term care and home care. Our Lynn has the longest waiting list for long-term care spaces. In fact, I understand that there are more people on the waiting list than there are existing beds in the system. Our waiting list will only grow in the situation, only become more dire without investment in long-term care. It is an inconsistent system, I would say, with some facilities being subsidized and others not, with any home that I've heard of short-staffed and under-resourced. We're calling for better care and access to care and working with many of our families in the community to bring their lived stories to Queen's Park. Regarding affordable and safe housing, I also want to thank the councillors who very regularly pick up the phone and take calls from our office to connect constituents with services and support in the region. I know that our region has been doing a lot of work on housing, but without the province's commitment to strengthen and invest, it continues to be a tangled, a downloaded tangle. So I would ask that I, our office be kept in the loop when it comes to specific asks of the province, so that our office can apply appropriate and targeted pressure on the appropriate ministries. When it comes to transit, with the increased pressures from the 407 extension and what will continue to be increased traffic, avoiding the 412 and eventually the 418 road tolls, we're seeing more traffic than Harmony Road and Oshawa should have to handle. We were glad to be able to write a letter to the Minister of Transportation about a long-ago commitment to address the traffic problems on Harmony Road at the 401. We're still waiting for a reply. We're also working to advocate for our community on the fairness of the 412 and 418. We have been pulling numbers from the ministry about road use or road underuse, and we will work with you once we have more real numbers to work with. When it comes to hydro, we have collected hydro bills and did a bit of a campaign to collect hydro bills from constituents to take the stories and struggle to the premier. But we're continuing to hear from our neighbours about the heavy cost of hydro. Recently, however, we've been hearing more and more from our community spaces, from our museums, gallery, and community centres. For example, our Curling Club. They don't know how much longer they're going to be able to operate the way they would like to due to the exorbitant all-in cost of electricity, of course, including global adjustment. We're working with these community organisations to pressure different ministries to try and come up with a plan. Frankly, I don't know what that plan exactly will look like, but if we don't figure out something, we could lose some of our very special community programmes in our city. Hydro, I don't think I have to tell you, continues to be one of the biggest cost challenges facing our families, businesses, and community spaces. So there are many other local community issues that come through our doors. We steadily deal with tenant concerns and complaints. We support our youth and students who are trying to make plans in a changing system. We help constituents with police issues and OIPRD complaint forms as needed. We help folks navigate our social services, try to help them with benefits and fairness issues. Interestingly, we had a, had an inquiry at my Queen's Park office regarding the viability of the port and whether or not the financial situation of the port will impact the ability of businesses there to continue uninterrupted. I believe that they came to us specifically on the matter of providing safety and roadsalt to various municipalities and cities, and saw the provincial connection there because of transportation and road safety concerns. I'll also mention in the last few years, I have had the opportunity and been glad to be an ambassador for the city in, both at home and away, being able to highlight our city's strengths and capacities. So I've been glad to do that in partnership with the city, and will ask that we can continue to get me the information so I can pass that along in different spaces. My final thoughts, I do head back to the legislature with a few pieces of private members legislation that I plan to table shortly after returning. They've been brought to our office by constituents. We're hoping to finish the work that we've started alongside the Brunt family to ensure firefighter trainees are protected. We're working on a few seniors' issues to try and ensure continuity of specific benefits beyond the age of 65, and we're working with some folks there. And again, the same ask, please refer anyone to our office that might need a hand with provincial issues. And lastly, I would like to ask that this council consider sharing submissions with our office as the provincial government is asking for us and other municipalities for input on initiatives or decisions. So I want to be able to continue to advocate for the community, but I'd like to be able to do that specifically and in a targeted capacity. So if I'm aware of any positions that we take or requests that we're making, that becomes easier. So currently, the government is asking for community input on cannabis lounges or compassion lounges. So as the city is gathering that data, I'd like to have it. And on our community safety file, opioid strategies, mental health resources, or initiatives, I'd like to continue to work with the city in a focused way. I think it's fair to ask the province to be a stronger partner, so I'm happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Questions to Ms. French? Councillor Neil?
No, I just wanted to ask, and I guess hopefully you can advocate for it as well, MPP French, is the elevator in buildings issue. The city has sent a letter to the province. We sent a second letter, and then lo and behold, I hear that there's something coming soon on that, on elevators in buildings, because it's been a huge issue in, like as you know, we have a lot of apartment buildings in Oshawa. And the other thing was the door-to-door canvassing. Like, that was an issue brought forward. I know in the senior citizens' centres, we were getting feedback from, on that years ago, where they were in, like, whole groups of salespeople were just going in the neighbourhoods door-to-door and asking people for their bills, like their utility bills, et cetera, and trying to get them to sign contracts, which some of the seniors did, which was unfortunate. Anyways, like, I thank you for your work on all of that.
If I can just briefly address that. Anyone else that you hear about in the community, please send them our way. We're doing our best to advocate and try, we have so many people try and get out of some of those contracts and work with them. At the provincial level, there's been a few pieces of legislation that we're trying to kind of catch, but just as soon as you identify a problem, it morphs. And as we heard from the police, there's always a new scam every day, so that is, that's an ongoing fight, but it's obviously worth waging. And I'd like to follow up with the elevator piece, because I'm not, there's some specifics I'm not sure about there. I know that we have lots of issues with accessibility in buildings, and that's a...
Well, we did pass a resolution here at Oshawa, and then we, we sent a letter originally to the province, and then we had to send a second letter.
That's so unusual.
So, because we never heard anything back, so I'm just throwing that out there, like, as I do hear, it's, it's coming forward in the legislature.
Well, if I can apply any specific pressure, I'd be more than happy to.
Councillor Peter Becki.
Your worship, and thank you, Jennifer, for being here with us today. You kind of caught my attention here when, as I mature through life, you talked about long-term care. And as we know, in the province of Ontario, that's been in shambles for, I think I could say, decades, if not longer. And I'm wondering just what you have in mind with regard to that, because of the number of seniors we have in our own city and in our own region, and of course, far beyond, and we see some horrific reports on what goes on in some of the long-care term facilities. What's your view on exactly what can be done with regard to this? Because we certainly need a lot of it.
I have lots of thoughts. You know, when we talk about how things used to be, and we think about nursing homes or, you know, we affectionately call them all sorts of things, but now they're long-term care homes, and that is because it's, they're facilities that are providing care in the long term. And that can be for our seniors, the majority, but also for younger and younger residents that require ongoing care, which, which bring in all sorts of challenges, especially with dementia, with the different mental health pieces. As I mentioned before, we don't have the, not only we don't have the spaces available, the existing spaces wouldn't even cover off the, the waiting list. So we have not, as a province, prioritized, you know, building more or keeping up with demand, and I don't have to tell anyone in this room that we're, you know, we're all getting older, even me, Mr. Peter Becki. But when we, when we follow the news and we see the horrific accounts and the sort of news-making situations, we tend to think that those are one-off stories. What we see in our office on a, on a regular basis are a lot of the smaller quality-of-life issues, and those are not being addressed either. So in terms of what, what I think needs to be done, we had been begging the government to expand the scope of the Wetlawfer Inquiry into the Wetlawfer Murders. Unfortunately, that wasn't done, but I think that was a missed opportunity, so we, as a province, need to, to apply that kind of pressure, to look at the system as a whole. And as we identify issues, small or large, we need to fix them. There's going to be obviously significant investment required to build the capacity we need, but I think even identifying resources, the understaffing, all of these things have to be addressed. We need to appropriately staff and appropriately, we need to, it can't be long-term storage, it has to be long-term care, and we don't have the resources to provide the care required, so we have to get back to that.
Again, thank you for being here.
Thanks for letting me.
Councillor McQuaid England.
Thank you. Enjoyed working with your office closely on many of the issues that you've touched, touched upon. And I, also, just a compliment to your staff, always very quick to get back in, in terms of helping and working together on issues to resolve them. Some of the questions that I have for you, though, relates to the recent scandals with sexual misconduct and other things that are occurring within the context of Me Too, and what the Ontario government is talking about doing in order to protect female staffers that are not currently covered under employment standards or employment codes. And does the NDP and your party have any sort of way forward to deal with that? And if it's a no right now, is it something that the party is considering? Because there is a gap for young women who work on the, like, who work in the Ontario legislature, staffers for political people in positions of power, and how they're recognised and where they can go in terms of dealing with these situations.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I'm not a young woman anymore, I'm youngish. But, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna choose to answer it a little differently than how you've asked it. Rather than the partisan pieces, I think it speaks more to the kind of broader power in politics, so not so much partisan, because I think that has to be part of the conversation. You know, what the premier's committing, what the different leaders are committing, I think, as a legislature, we need to be a model employer, and right now, I would say that the legislature doesn't actually have the processes you were asking about earlier. As a, as a woman or as a member of the legislature, should I have a case of, you know, either harassment or assault, there isn't a, an avenue. Right now, we don't have a process. That's in the works, but it's, it's been slow-going. And I think certainly, to be an inclusive space, to ensure that it's a safe workplace, we should be a leader in the province. Hopefully, that will be, once we get back, I expect the attention paid to everything that's going on, that we should see that. I think the movements of Me Too, or, you know, the hashtag Not OK, that these are conversation starters. I think we need to have them broadly in the community about power, about who's got it, and, you know, valuing people where they stand, or where they sit. And so I'm glad to be a part of that. I know that I've been applying pressure as needed, and I've been doing some of my own personal growing, I think, along with my, you know, female and male counterparts. I would like to encourage more young people to pursue politics. I'd like to encourage more, you know, women to pursue it, and I think we need to challenge ourselves to ensure that, that we know what that needs to look like.
So just on that topic of encouraging younger women, I've had, I've had some recent conflicting sort of feelings, and I, and whether or not you feel the same type of conflicting feelings of almost sending lambs to slaughter, because there's no current protections for them. So we tell them to get involved. In 1929, women became persons under the law so that they could be able to vote, but to actually take part in the political process in a proactive and active manner, they then lose the rights of being basically a person and having the decency and respect to be able to deal with some of these issues. So I, it's a conundrum. Would you agree in terms of...
I would agree, it's, I would agree it's a conundrum and a challenge. There are teachable moments all over the place, I recognise that, you know, coming from education into this. I've also had to sort of challenge myself how, how I handle things. There've been lots of opportunities to handle things, and I think that were I not an elected official with a title and a certain amount of confidence or influence or protection, I might have hesitated to address some issues. And I think that it's important for us as a system and a society to kind of ensure that we recognise not everyone has the voice or the confidence or the power to be able to address situations, so we do our best to avoid them.
And one of the things that I would like you to consider, I know Guelph has, for the purpose of dealing with these issues, in terms of municipalities, councillors are considered employees under the code, so, under their employment sort of protections. And I know our staff and, are looking at sort of how to deal with that here, but I'm wondering if there needs to be any more improvements, and if you could look into if there needs to be better improvements to the municipal act to ensure that municipalities are providing the proper protections needed for especially young women in these positions to deal with these issues in an effective manner, that is not always about going through a public code of conduct process.
I'm not familiar with what is needed. I know that if I were just to look at my own workplace, which is Queen's Park and all of Ontario, we don't have a current code of conduct or a process to address any concern. So if I look at that as the starting point, I would say that there's room to improve across the board.
And one of the other things that I just, when we talk about renters and some of the issues that we've dealt with...
When we talk about...
Renters, now.
Renters.
And we talk about some of the issues that, that are, that our residents face. I'm wondering also if you can consider, I know that you only get a certain number of private members' bills, and I appreciate the ones that you are working on, but one of the things that I would hope that the government would consider is creating a system that basically makes sure that every municipality has licensing for landlords to add extended protections for tenants. Right now, it's not something that is prescriptive, and I think if there is a prescriptive legislation as it relates to licensing, that we do with other things, we might be able to have better protections for tenants and also work within other systems within the Ontario government for those protections. So just a consideration for the future.
It's something I've heard this much about, and look forward to connecting with our municipal affairs critic to have a better understanding of the historic and also the local, what that would look like locally.
Thank you.
Any other members of council? Councillor Sanders?
Sorry, you didn't... Sorry. Just in regards, I want to just talk about the 412 and the 418, because when they were free, they seemed to be a lot busier than what they currently are, and what happens is, as municipalities, we, our roads get pounded because they take alternative routes, so I, I just want to talk about that. If you want to just get, tell me what your thoughts are in regards to the 412 and 418.
Stinks. I have lots of thoughts. I'll try and keep them brief, though.
Will they be free?
So...
Charged by the word instead of the kilometre.
Members of council?
Oh, will they be free?
No, good.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Ms. French. Members of council, Ms. French has the floor, she's answering a question. Please give your comments to yourself. Ms. French?
Thank you, your worship. So we, we put in a request through the Legislative Library to get a breakdown on traffic use and patterns with the 412, the 407 extension, before it became told, like, while it was free and then, and after it wasn't. We got our numbers back, and it was kind of annoying because it didn't have the breakdown we had wanted. It was the 407 extension, including the 412. We couldn't get them separately. So we've had to request again, more specifically, from the Ministry of Transportation, and no, maybe a surprise, we're still awaiting those numbers. So that's what I'd kind of be interested in looking at and sharing. Anecdotally, it, it seems to run pretty light, the 412.
But really, if they're collecting the tolls, the municipalities should actually get part of those tolls, give it back to them because of the use of their, their roads.
So it would seem to me, from where I sit, across from the government and east of Toronto, it seems to be that we really have been left out of the decisions for Durham that impact us, and when there's money being collected, paid by the residents of Durham, I would, I don't know about exclusively, but I would say the bulk of the folks on the 412 are coming and going from Durham. I don't think it's a fair setup, absolutely. I'm not going to show all my cards right now in terms of what I would advocate for, but I don't see the situation as being fair. I know that there are grassroots initiatives to free the 412, but we are applying pressure on this front, because the way it is now is not fair to municipalities, but certainly isn't fair to our commuters and our community members.
Okay. In regards to, is there anything currently in the province in regards to energy efficiencies? Because you talked, I heard you talk about the Curling Club and the high cost of hydro. Is there anything the province is doing? Because at one time, they had programs where you could insulate and do, have efficiencies, and they would pay a portion of it for seniors or anybody else?
I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I don't know. I suspect that as we get back after this break, that there are going to be some incentives and various programs that are going to be announced. I imagine with, you know, the cost of living and the cost of electricity, that that would be a good idea for the government to do. I don't know what their plans are.
Do you know what any of their plans are in regards to prescription medications or anything like that, or for people with health issues that have to go to other provinces to get service?
I don't mean to be flip at all, but I know that things are kind of a mess right now. There, our office deals on a, you know, case-by-case basis with sort of rare situations and, and trying to get folks remedy for that, or some kind of cost offset, and we're constantly dealing with the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care on those issues. You know, the only, the only announcement they have made is the OHIP Plus, or Drug Plan Number Seven, or whatever you want to call it.
Number Four.
So it's, I don't know if there's going to be a further program about prescriptions or specific rare ones. I don't know. I think universal pharma care would be a great idea.
Do you know whether there's any predictions on how much tax will be made on the sales of marijuana? Only because it's, it's still a tax revenue, between the federal governments and the provincial governments? And when it, it does affect the municipalities, too?
It absolutely affects the municipalities. I don't, I don't know what the projections are now. I know that a couple of the headlines lately have not given the government credit for their, have given them, how do I word this? Anything that I've sort of seen lately is, makes it look like the government hasn't actually done the math well enough to make enough profit, and therefore to see the revenues be what, what people would imagine they would be. I'm not going to comment on specifics. I'm interested in them because, you know, as you said, this is a, should be a partnership with municipalities. I recognise that there have been decisions made on this file that have surprised municipalities. I mentioned the compassion lounges, they're wanting feedback because there've been decisions made. Cart before the horse, I'm not entirely sure there, but they, there's a lot of, a lot of specifics yet to be determined.
Do you know whether, because this council actually passed a resolution, and we sent it to members of parliament, and it's in regards to assaults and people that had prior criminal records before entering nursing homes, and staff, because of the privacy of legislation, are not allowed to have that information? And we, I'd like to kind of have some follow-up, because I think it was important that staff need to be aware of what some of these patients have done, because some of them are silent inside those nursing homes and cannot stand up for themselves and protect themselves. And I know we sent it as a resolution, so I just, I didn't know ever, I never heard any follow-up inside the legislation at all, so...
And I would like to, I would like to follow up with that, because when it comes to staff, staff safety, it's, it's also resident safety, and a number of our families, they, you know, there's, there's privacy information that we need to, you know, look after, but at the same time, there's, family has, families have been advocating as well, because when they don't know that their loved ones are at risk and in danger, it begs the question, you know, how do you, how do you best protect both privacy as well as, you know, personal security? I would like to follow up...
Okay.
On that issue, and do I follow up with you directly, or how does that...
You can follow up with me directly if you wish, but I think it's one that has to be addressed somewhere, because there's the concern of, if they've already have, gone before the courts, they have the charges, they've under probation order, and it's to protect the residents that they're being placed in front of, because they're unaware of anything going on, so we can talk about it.
Yeah, there are additional complications as well, especially when you have folks with sort of a prior history, perhaps, and then you also have the onset of dementia, and you have, you have all sorts of challenging factors that we have to, have to look at to keep everyone secure.
Yes.
And that comes back to the original point about long-term care. Our model hasn't changed, and our challenges have, and our priorities need to reflect that, I would say.
Thank you.
Councillor Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, MPP French, for being here tonight and for your candid responses. I just have one question. It's a two-part question, and it concerns the GO Transit Extension to Clarrington. Is it possible for you to give us a brief update as to the status of that project? And secondly, is the GO extension to Clarrington completely independent of the upcoming provincial election results?
My instinct on this answer isn't going to be anything useful, and I'm not trying to be rude. I don't have specifics beyond what I have, when I get invited, or if I hear about, right before a meeting, when they come and do the community consultations, that is sort of, that's the information that I, that I have had to date, that it seems to be sort of continually pushed down the road. I'd like to have a better answer for you, and I feel like there might be one available. Your question about the, the election, I really hope that things are set in stone enough that they will move forward regardless of who is at the helm. I have a, I, wishful thinking, I don't, I don't know. I'd like to, I wish I had a better answer, and I probably can get one for you.
We'll look forward to that.
Yeah. I don't know that it'll actually be a deeper and more meaningful answer than what I gave you, is what I'm worried about, but I... you, is what I'm worried about, but I, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. French. Members of council, the normal break time is 8:30.
Recession?
Okay. Recession for 15 minutes, 15 minutes by councillor Peterbecky, seconded by councillor Chapman. Members of council, on a 15-minute recess, all those in favour? Opposed? None? That carries. We will see you back in, at 8:50.